Thank you, body of the RTM for accepting me as your moderator. I've done this in the past and I am honored to be considered again to lead this group. I'd also like to thank all of the individuals that represent District Two that voted for me. And I'd also just like to mention that I hope that we can all work together to do the best for Groton. And I'd also want to make sure that I let you know that I will be the voice for all the people. I have to say thank you to the one person that allowed me to do this, which was my loving wife Laura, who said you can go and spend your second Wednesday of the month at the RTM. So I'd like to thank her as well. And with that being said, I'm going to take a brief recess so I can get the correspondence in order so that we can then reconvene as soon as possible so that the public can speak during public petitions. All right, so we'll take a brief five-minute recess. Please be back in your seats at seven twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, body of the RTM for accepting me as your moderator.
Asked Italian Americans in Connecticut, representing various organizations and other organizations nationally, including the Italian American Citizens Club in Groton. I spoke to David Elvento yesterday, and he also agrees with this proposal to you. Unlike when we were invited to the White House, Italian Americans were never invited into the conversation here in Groton to change Columbus Day. And not all the alternatives were explored. So, one alternative that was not explored was having Columbus Day continue to be on the second Monday of October annually, and Indigenous Peoples' Day on the International Day of the World's Indigenous Peoples' on August 9th. And that's in solidarity with all Indigenous communities throughout the world as designated by the United Nations in 1982. Other alternatives would be the Fourth Friday in September, which is Native American Day, or the Friday after Thanksgiving, which is Native American Day, which has slight, which has a different history than Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is more inclusive of all people. So with that being said, there is a process in the Charter that could allow representatives here to be more inclusive and invite the Italian American community to be part of the conversation and take into account all members of the community. By power of veto, by two-thirds, you could veto the resolution by the Town Council, which would restore Columbus Day as it was before the Council made its resolution in November, which would keep Columbus Day as the name of the holiday, in line with Connecticut general statutes, and also with the federal holiday. Another power that you have as members of the town meeting is you could propose an ordinance-
You just, if you could just wrap it up, you have about thirty seconds.
Yeah, sure, thank you. You could propose on ordinance back to the Council saying, "The name change in reference of the Italian Heritage Day, an Indigenous Peoples' Holiday in the Town of Groton, change it to Columbus annually." And I would add this, which wasn't there before, "The Town of Groton recognizes and honors Indigenous Peoples' Day on August 9th annually in solidarity with Indigenous communities throughout the world." And that shows the character of the Italian American organizations across this country and in Groton on a true inclusive approach to honoring all people. And I hope you consider to veto that tonight, or find a way of pushing that ordinance back to the Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes everyone that was on the list to speak. However, we are taking other speakers, so if you could just please give us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, everyone. How you feel? Good? Okay, good, just making sure all are good. My name is Colton Harris, and I live on 44 Golf Street in Groton, Connecticut. And I'm here to speak in favor of the Groton Skate Park, and I want to echo the sentiments of my peers, my friends, and people who've become my family. And I just wanted to share like a couple of things. One, Groton Skate Park is the home of what I consider to be concrete therapy. As you can kind of understand, all of us have grown, developed, and have been nurtured in a healthy way by the skate park community. And in its current form, the way that I look at it is, it's a combination of an art gallery and architectural genius. And what I mean by that is that it's, the quality of the park, it's considered by many to be one of the best, in my opinion, one of the best parks in the world in its current status. And to expand it and to further develop it would not only increase the quality of the skateboarding experience, but also of community, and also Groton being a destination. A lot of my friends and I, when we talk about traveling the world and being away, our main focus is, oh no, Groton won't be our local park anymore if we were to go anywhere else, which speaks to that. And then also, I think that one thing that is really important about the skate park is that it is a place of accessibility and inclusivity. And especially in a culture and society, we're talking so much about, what does it mean to be inclusive? What does it mean to be equitable? What does it mean to nurture human spaces? The skate park is a space where you'll see all types of folks joining together around this art form and around this activity, this sport, however you view it, in a way that's decentralizing the myth of dehumanization. And so, the skate park has nurtured that, it's cultivated that for tourism, for economic viability, to, as was already said, the businesses and everything else. So I just want to speak in advocacy for expansion and further development of an already incredible space that nurtures some of the best skateboarding talent in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Are there any other folks that would like to speak? Is there someone else online? Correct, Madam Clerk? Okay. Well, I'm going to close off Item E, Citizens' Petition. I thank everybody for coming out and speaking to their issues. Our next item is Item F, Appointment of a Temporary Rules and Procedures Committee. Item 2023-982. We are trying to gather some folks to prepare for the new rules that we will be using under the 34th term of the RTM. I've selected a few people. I'm going to volunteer you that you're going to be on this committee. That doesn't mean necessarily that you have to be on there permanently, but I am trying to do it with a little bit of nuance of some new, some old, because they're very familiar with the rules. Seasoned. And as well, I'm trying to abide by our temporary rules of the 33rd Committee to make sure I have some diversification on party representation. So with that being said, I would like to have Representative Watson be Chair of that meeting, along with Representative Dean Shinbrock.
Oh, you're laughing, huh?
Representative Massett. Representative Norman. It's only temporary. And then Representative Barrell. Okay, so my intention is for you to have some, a meeting or two, and we could discuss the permanent rules at our next meeting in January. If there are any members of this group that have questions or concerns about some of the rules, or they would like to submit some edits or revisions, please feel free to submit them to me. My email address is going to be on the membership roster once the Town Clerk puts it together. You could also refer them to the Town Clerk or the Town Manager. When we find out when that meeting is going to happen, we will then give that information out to all so that they can give their opinions on what the rules should be revised to, stay the same, or eliminate. Okay? Thank you so much for your service. Your voluntold service. Okay, so everybody, Reception of Communications is Item G. Everybody should have received in their packet, per the Town Clerk, 2023-981, Shenacossack Golf Course, November Revenue Report.
It was a separate email.
I think, yes, I believe Ms. Ray Hilli sent it last week. As well as, I didn't, whoa, shoot, sorry. I did also read Mr., and I'm sorry, I'm saying this wrong, Gararnieri. Close enough? Okay? That was also in the packet as well of Communications. As you mentioned before, there are some options if we, as a body, decide that we want to revise or eliminate what the Town Council has done, either using the power of veto or a power of initiative. So I'm being told by the Town Council, the only thing that would, we'd be able to rectify the situation and would be to do a power of initiative under our rules, current rules of the Committee, which is 9.5, oh, excuse me, it's, well, it's Town Charter, 3.0 and so and so, but we also have it in our RTM rules as well. Okay? Any other communications from any RTM members that would like to share? I have one. I got a communication from Counselor Pacino stating that the 33rd RTM had worked hard to try to build up an account to get a brick for the Groton sale that's going to be placed right around yonder. They have $130 in donations, we need 250. Right now, we're about 120 short. So if there are 12 people out there that could pony up 10 bucks, or if there's 24 people that'll pony up five, if you are on the 33rd RTM and you want to put that contribution to a nice brick, that'll be forever memorialized when the Groton sale gets put up, please contact Counselor Pacino. He has an email address that's through the Town of Groton now. Okay? Thank you so much.
Does Counselor Pacino take Venmo yet?
The question to the member, no, the answer is no. Okay? All right, any other communications? Okay. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to-
Chairperson?
I'm sorry, where, who am I looking at? If you could please stand too, I just can't see you. Thank you, Mr. Perella.
Thank you so much for recognizing me. Just a couple of things that I did have. I spoke at the Council meeting, and I want to congratulate everybody here, first of all, for your swearing in, and a great Council meeting we had last week. And I want to just say a couple things, which I did say at the Council meeting and a Planning and Zoning Meeting. We've had several residents in District 4 and District 1 complain about the construction and the blasting off of Long Hill Road and that particular approved plan that was done last January. The residents are really in a quandary, they're very upset. They've approached me, and I've been trying to be in communication with them. One of them was supposed to come tonight, but I don't think she knew that the meeting was here. We need, I know John, excuse me, Town Manager Burt is working on that, we've been in contact with him, and I directed it through him. But I am going to let, just make you all aware that this is a serious issue. The blasting is so bad that four miles up the road, our houses are shaking. That is bedrock there. I believe that decision to do that particular plan there was a very, very poor, poor engineered decision by whoever, the bodies or staffing or whatever decided to do that. It may have passed because it followed every little dot of the I and the T, but in the long term, it's doing a lot of damage. Never mind the possibility that there was not a public hearing called, or, and/or, the fact that these traffic studies, the state has to approve that, I'm very surprised that they did, and there's other plans for another changing oil facility, facility right down the street from that. This goes against, in my opinion, our plan of development of balance between residential and commercial development.
Point of order?
Yes.
I think this has gone beyond communication, though I do appreciate your views.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that we have had quite a few residents that have made complaints about that, and police reports were made about illegal parking, so I just wanted you to make you all aware of that, that it may be going against the plan of development. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perell. Any other communication? Yes, the only information that I got about an absent member would be Representative Crockett-Hubbard. All right, I am going to turn it over to the Town Manager for the report of the Town Manager. Mr. Burt?
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to everyone. Look forward to working with you, if you're new, and continue working with those who have been here. The financials of the town, and I will send this out later to everybody, the preliminary fund balance as of June 30th, 2023, unaudited, is approximately, for the general fund balance, 31.6 million, which is 22% of the FYE 2023 general fund adopted budget. The general contingency budget for FYE 24, we appropriated that at 300,000 for unknowns. It was the current balance of 259,500 left. The 40,500 had been taken out for the, to put towards a USS Groton sale. And then the capital reserve fund balance as of June 30th, 23, unaudited, is 2.2 million. Few of the things going on, the Town Council met last night in a COW, Committee of the Whole. One of the discussions was a, there's actually two bridge works that'll be being done on Groton Long Point, but last night, the Department of Transportation came to discuss the bridge over the Amtrak Railroad. They were describing some options the town would have. There was quite a few questions, so that went on for about two hours, and then it'll be taken back up at the January 9th meeting. Let's see, the, had an update on the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan, and then a Town Attorney presentation on roles of the Town Council. And then if you're interested, I think everyone should watch this on January 9th, the Town Council will have FOIA training from the FOIA Commission, which of course will be recorded, so that's good information for everybody. The last couple of days, the police have been in the middle of a site visit as part of efforts to become accredited by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Kalia. There's around 180 things you have to fulfill to become that, and we're closing in hopefully on being that, beginning certified, and eventually it'll go for the advanced certification. It means you're doing things really well, so hopefully we'll achieve that. We are looking at a solar project at the Town Transfer Station. Those bids have been released, the RFP has been released, due back in, on January 10th, and something should go before the Council in February, I'm expecting. We are looking at adding bike lane markings along Groton Long Point Road. May not be able to get them in this year due to weather, but as soon as we can get them in, we will. And last thing you may have seen at Quonique Plains Park, where the solar lights have been going in, Public Works were putting those in, so people will be able to walk a little later into the evening during this time of year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. I open up the floor for any questions for the Town Manager from any of RTM members. All right, well, thank you so much, Mr. Burt. Okay, we are done with Item H. We are on I, Economic Development. There's a 2023-975 Economic Division Report. Okay, this is in our packet? Yep, thank you, Representative Powers, this was in our packet. Any questions on that?
And I am planning, having, planning and economic development staff attend soon, so they'll be able to go over some of the things happening with the department.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Probably the next meeting.
All right. All right. Moving swiftly along here, this is a permanent item that we've put on the budget back probably when I was on the RTM, my third term, about any items for budget discussion. Is there any comments regarding budget? Just to be clear, the budget is being created right now by the town and all the different departments. They're going to be packaging that up, and usually, for the new members that don't know, we're going to receive that packet in March. Is that correct?
Yeah, March 15th is the deadline for when the agenda has to be put, or the budget has to be put together.
Okay. And also, just be advised that it's going to, we're usually going to get that big binder. If people do not want to get that big binder, you can always let us know, and we can get it to you electronically. And for the public at large, once that deadline hits, it will be on the Town Website so that you can peruse and review. The first, the first group to act upon the budget approval process is going to be the Town Council, and they'll do their deliberations. I highly recommend that members of this body watch those deliberations so that they can get any information that they need to know in order to better understand the budget and know what takes a part of that. And then from that point, once they approve it, this will then get farmed out to committees. None of you right now, except Temporary Rules, are an active committee right now, but I will be reaching out to all of you soon to see what committees you are interested in serving in. The rules of the RTM state that every RTM member needs to be a part of one permanent committee and no more than two committees. And we have to, again, abide by the rules of the RTM regarding equitable representation, representation from parties, political parties. So we'll be in touch with you soon about what ones you are interested in serving in. And then we'll end up, after that committee, we'll then go into the whole body discussion on approving the budget and any capital improvement projects that are coming. Does that sound about right?
That is correct. I just wanted to make, I want to make sure the Clerk notes, Representative Dudden had to leave the meeting, she's actually overseas and going to a work meeting right now, so.
Okay, so that would make us down to, Town Clerk, we're down to 33. Dudden is offline now. All right, thank you so much. Roger that. Okay, any other? Yes, Madam Clerk?
I believe I emailed all Town, while you were elect, you hadn't been voted, you hadn't been oaths yet, but an email that I sent that had an information packet, it had one sheet that you fill out with all of your information, your email, what committees you want to be on. I believe you all received that, if not, I'll send it again. That should be sent back to the Clerk's office so we can give it to the Moderator. Also, I understand I have one email wrong, I may have many more, but given the emails that you have, I really encourage you to create a specific email just for RTM, and this will help, if you ever have a freedom of information request to know all the emails that you received, you won't get into your regular email. So you could put your last name, RTM632, whatever district you're at, at Gmail, or Hotmail, or Yourmail, or MeMail, whatever you like. But that would make the most sense for your protection, for your freedom of information, so it's all in one place. So you let us know what that is, and so then we can share that with all of you and the public, because it does go on the Town Register.
Correct. And to further discuss that issue, if, we'll be getting emails from, from the Town Clerk and other officials in the town. What I'm going to strongly recommend against, especially for our new members, is starting a email chain of conversations regarding any sort of town business. I may, let's say, for example, tell you, hey, this is going to be coming up soon, I hope for your support, I'm just saying as a general member, but back and forth on the discussion and opinions of those, I would strongly say, please do not do that. The area for those discussions are going to be here in this group and also in the Committee, the Committee meetings as well, so I would ask you to please not do that. If you're going to have a conversation with one member to the other, again, make a phone call, send a text, but please stay away from group texts and group emails, because that could, you know, be a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Okay? Representative Perella, you have a question on, on the budget discussions?
Well, just the email, I'd like to suggest that the RTM have a email like the Council has, that's for the government, because I think that can get where you're getting over, crossing over, and then it keeps it very tight and very clean. I know there's 30-something members, but, you know, we're also partly legislative for budgets, so.
Sure. This is something that isn't new to the discussion. I, again, back probably seven or eight years ago, we've asked for that, and due to the financial constraints of having X amount times 43 email accounts, it's, it's not fiscally possible. So again, I would just recommend use your name, dot Groton, and your RTM and district, at gmail.com. It's free, all right? Let's save the town some money, okay? Representative Casper, you have the floor.
Thank you, I almost said Madam Moderator, but. I would suggest that if you're sending out emails to a group, that you blind copy BCC, the group, and that prevents the reply to all.
Okay, duly noted, so if we can make sure that happens at the Clerk's office, is just get a BCC so that, and if I wanted to share something with everybody, or someone else wanted to share something, please blind copy somebody, okay? So they don't know who it's going to. All right, is there any other discussion regarding budget? Yes, Representative Norman, you have the floor.
Yeah, Town Manager, is it possible this time, if it is not too much work, to get Excel or some sort of editable piece of the parts of the budget that are not just the top line cost centers, but the whole thing?
That, yeah, I think that's not too difficult to do.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure it's easy.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding budget? All right, seeing none, we're going to go and move on to Item K, Other Business. Okay, this is Item K, 2023-860, for Sutton Park Renovation Investment. If someone doesn't mind, from the RTM membership, reading the resolution, that is on page two into page three of our document, please. Representative Powers? S, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 2023-860, for Sutton Park renovation investments. Resolution approving an additional $1,468,366 for renovations to Sutton Park. Whereas the town approved $1,050,000 in FYE 2022 budget to make renovations to Sutton Park, including the skateboard playground landscape redesigning and repaving the parking lot, and whereas feedback through the community engagement process was incorporated into the conceptual plan, and whereas the project costs of renovations exceeds the budget cost now, therefore be it, resolve that the Town Council approves the appropriations of an additional $1,468,366 for the sum dollars, for the Sutton Park project, with $135,000 from the low ship funds and $1,333,366 from capital improvement projects fund balance to renovate Sections 1 and A-1 of the skateboard, and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
Okay, the motion has been moved by Powers S., seconded by Massett. This is a approval for an expenditure of $1,468,366. And again, this is going to require a two-thirds vote in order to approve this under the current or the temporary rules of the RTM. Again, this is a little different than what we've done in the past, but again, under this rule, six point, yeah, 6.5.4, any matter of proper interest to the RTM may be returned to the appropriate Standing Committee by a majority of vote of those present, except after that, after a matter has been once returned to the Committee, it shall require a two-thirds vote of those present to return it again to the Standing Committee. So again, I'm a little bit green on this, and I'll be honest with you, but we have our Town Manager here, we have Director Barry here, and we also have, I think, at least four members of our ex officio body, which is the Town Council, that can provide some clarification for this. Just if I can get this question answered, we've already approved $1,050,000 of this in the, in last year's budget, is that correct?
Correct.
And what we're doing is we're adding to that, and what is the total that we're adding on top of what we've already approved in last year?
The total is $1,468,366. $1,333,366 would be our capital improvement project fund balance. We have, you saw in that report earlier, 2.2 million fund balance, which is by far the highest I've ever seen that fund. We usually hover between 500 to a million, and we often plan to use it for the budget each year. What we did was, every so often, we sweep, if projects are closed, we sweep the money back in, and a lot of projects had actually, they were a little bit older projects, and right now, stuff is bidding high, but before, they were, when they were bidding well, we were able to put quite a bit of money back into that fund. And then the other 135,000s, we get a little money from the state each year for local capital improvement project funds, and we have 135,000 available from that. And we're trying to, we've had quite a time on, if you've watched the meetings, we've had quite a time on bidding projects, they've been coming over. What we want to do is get this out to bid as early as possible, the closer you are to the actual construction season, the higher the cost. They plan their things early, so we want to try to get this going.
Okay, and just to be clear, we have, we have 33 members present- And just to be clear, we have, we have thirty-three members present, so in order for this to pass by two-thirds vote, I'm looking for my little handy card here. No, I don't have a wallet on my back. Twenty-two. We're going to need twenty-two members voting in the affirmative in order to move this item forward without having it to go back to a finance committee. Is that correct, Representative Powers? Okay. Are there any questions regarding the number on the floor? Representative Obray, you have the floor.
I just, you asked a question, and the way the manager.
I'm sorry, your microphone isn't on, so if you could just turn that on, please.
I do that so he can get impatient with me. You asked the question of how much we have and how much we need, and unfortunately, the way that it was answered lost me some ways. Can we go back to just a clear answer of what we have and what we need?
Okay.
Not necessarily where it's coming from?
Okay. You're the Town Manager. How much more money do we need for this project than?
Right.
Things on top of what we already approved in twenty-twenty-two?
Sure. Originally approved was one million fifty thousand. Now, there is cost for engineering architectural, so there's actually nine hundred and forty-six thousand left. So to add to that, to be able to do the full skate park area, we need one, a little under one-point-five billion.
And that's in addition to what we've already approved?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Representative Whitney?
Yes, thank you. I've got questions on the process. So I see the two-thirds, that's Rule six-point-five-point-four. But has this gone through, this new part gone through any of our committees? And if not, is our two-thirds vote to suspend the rules and then vote on it?
It's two-thirds to suspend. To add it to.
Yes, based on, based on six-point-five-point-four, that is overriding the rule that states that we have to send this to committee, and we'll be able to vote on it in affirmative tonight if we were to get a two-thirds vote on that.
I should probably first vote two-thirds to suspend, then it would take a majority vote later.
Okay. So there's two ways to do this, then. We could do it the way that we're moving now, which is to use under Rule six-point-five-point-four to get that two-thirds vote, or someone could make a motion to suspend the rules, and then we'll need a two-thirds vote, then we will only need a simple majority in order to pass the item on the floor right now.
Okay. So I just, just now, read, read six-point-five-point-four, so this is new to me as well. But, so if I read this, I'll just read six-point-five-point-four. Any matter of proper interest to the RTM may be returned to the appropriate standing committee by a majority vote of those present, except that after a matter has once been returned to committee, it shall require a two-thirds vote of those present to return it again to the standing committee. So six-point-five-point-four would only be a vote to return it to whatever committee you feel is the most appropriate. It's not a vote to approve the amount. That's my read of it.
Six-point-five-point-one is, you need to do two-thirds vote to suspend the rules to be able to discuss it, under six-five-one. And then if that passes, then it's a simple majority to actually approve it. So right now, you need two-thirds to add it to the agenda, essentially, by suspending the rules.
Okay. So the way that I'm hearing this, then, is we really shouldn't have put that other business item on the floor. If we can get a withdrawal of that motion and second, then we could find a way to get a motion to suspend the rules, and then we will get a two, we could have a two-thirds majority vote to act on this other business item.
I'll sit down after that, but this, but I could just suggest, if it's, if, is this timely, or can we just send it to our committee? That's my question.
It is, we've been going hundreds of thousands over budget in everything we're bidding, and it's very critical to get it out as far back from construction season as possible. Literally, the difference could be hundreds of thousands, even waiting a month, but.
Okay. Yes.
So my, my understanding of six-five-three is, that's where any item that the RTM is to discuss has to go to a committee. And the council's asking this body to override that rule by two-thirds vote, so it doesn't go to committee. And so, you know, you can, you can either have the motion that's on the floor now voted by two-thirds, which would cover both, or have two separate votes. It's quite up to you.
Does that answer your question?
My understanding is we, to vote on something that hasn't gone through committee, we have to suspend the rules vote first, which is two-thirds vote, and then we discuss and vote. But it is odd that it's in the agenda as well, but that's okay with me.
Councilor Borlon? Again, all town councilors have a right to speak, they just don't have the right to vote on items on this body.
Thank you. Portia Borlon, Groton Town Councilor. So I was in full support, obviously, of this motion, but to my understanding, when we voted on it, it, we did not say not to go to committee. So I just wanted to clarify what was said, and maybe to the Town Manager. We, normally, it just comes, we refer it to the RTM, and then you guys are to move it where you guys choose. So I'm not, that wasn't the motion nor the vote on the floor from the council, was to move what we appropriated forward, but we never said skip committee. So I just want clarification on that.
So on item, in our rules, temporary rules, six-point-five-point-three, I'm going to read it. Matters referred to the committee between RTM meetings must be announced at a subsequent meeting of the RTM. Such matters may be reported upon and said committing at this meeting. However, for such matters to be acted upon in the RTM at the same meeting, the following requirements must be satisfied. The matter must have been referred at least seven days prior to said meeting. I believe that you all had the discussion and approval seven days prior to this meeting. The committees must have a prepared report, which includes recommendations for action by the RTM. A written summary of the matter must appear on the agenda and have been sent to each RTM member prior to the meeting. While the matter must have been referred to the RTM at least seven days prior to the meeting, the town council may or may not have taken action prior to seven days, and the town council must have taken action prior to the RTM meeting. So in my interpretation of this, it does meet those four criterias, so that we could act upon it. And we have two options to discuss this, seven-point-five-point-four, or seven-point-five-point-one, which both make us have to have a two-thirds vote in order to discuss this. If it's the people's will to go and drag this another month and have that committee meeting, which we haven't had committee set, and then act on this in January, we can do so. However, I've heard from the Town Manager and as well as the public that they want this to happen, and it would be up to the body to decide which way they want to go with this.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I guess to the Town Manager, I just want to make sure, again, when we sent it, we didn't say you couldn't do it this way. We just sent it to be determined by the RTM. We did not say to skip committee, correct?
Right. It was six-five-three, right.
Just want to make sure. That's something new that developed tonight.
Right. To me, you're doing under six-five-one, because it hasn't gone through committee.
Right.
So you're doing a six-five-one. You're voting two-thirds to not require it to go to committee.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to retract that motion, and the second?
I make a motion to retract the motion.
All right. And can we get that second away? All right, great. Can we start this over again, then, Mr. Representative Powers?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to have a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, please.
All right. Now we're in, we're in order. Okay, we are using item six-point-five-point-one, and we're going to, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules so we can act on this item, which is item, other business for the Sutton Park renovations. We can have a debate on this motion, on whether or not we want to suspend the rules or not. It's not about a discussion on the Sutton Park issue, so we need to focus on just that. In order to do this, we need a two-thirds vote, which is twenty-two members in the affirmative in order to suspend the rules so we can act on this tonight. I open up the floor for debate.
Can I just ask a question? If, I know you were like, we don't want to talk about Sutton Park. Are we suspending the rules just for this issue, or are we suspending the rules and anything else can come to the floor under this?
Just for this issue.
Okay, great.
Is there any other discussion on suspension of the rules? Representative Massett?
Could we do a roll call vote for this?
Yes. All right. And the Town Clerk, I apologize, we just got confirmation that there's no debate on suspension of the rules, so, but thank you for the clarification. All right. We're all crawling and walking again, all right?
All right.
Okay. So we're going to do a roll call vote on this. So if you could, when they call your name, if you could please say aye, no, or abstain. Thank you.
Adams?
Yes.
Anbois?
I was supposed to, you last, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Auntie Puss?
No.
No? You said no?
Yes. That was a no.
Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, that was a no?
No.
No?
That was a no.
Okay. Thanks. I can't see with these glasses on. Burrell?
Yes.
Casper?
Aye.
Dean Shinrot?
Yes.
Dudden?
She's out.
Yep, she left. Fetters?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Fitz, Fritchie?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Gardner?
Aye.
Gibbs?
No.
Henscom?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Keep?
Yes.
Luck?
Yes.
Massett?
Yes.
McElree?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Obrey?
Yes.
Porella?
No.
Powers K?
Yes.
Powers S?
Yes.
Pulaski?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Umri?
Yes.
V.C. Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Whitney?
No.
And?
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's twenty-eight, yes. Five, no. It passes.
Four, five. Okay. So that, motion to suspend the rules passes.
Twenty-eight, yes.
Twenty-eight, yes, five, no, zero abstentions. Okay, so now we can go on. Representative Powers or someone? All right. Representative Watson?
I make a motion that we pass the resolution, which has already been read earlier.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded to accept item two-zero-two-three-dash-eight-six-zero for Sutton Park renovation investment. Resolution approving an additional one point four-six-two-eight-point-three-six-six. That's one million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for renovations to Sutton Park, whereas the town approved one million fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two budget to make renovations to Sutton Park, including the skate park playground landscaping design and repaving of the parking lot. And whereas feedback through the community engagement process was incorporated into the conceptual plans, and whereas the projected cost of renovations exceeded the budgeted cost, now therefore be resolved that the town council approve the appropriation for additional one million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for the Sutton Park project, with one hundred and thirty-five thousand from low SIP funds, and one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-six from capital improvement projects fund balance to renovate Sections One and A dash one of the skate park, and refer the matter to the RTM. Oh, we don't have to say that, no. All right. So I strike that last sentence, little bit of sentence. Okay? So that's what we're voting on now, and because we just suspended the rules, it takes a simple majority in order to vote this in the affirmative. I open up the floor for discussion on this matter for Sutton Park. Is there any discussion? Representative Porella?
I just want to compliment, I'd rather see this go to committee, but the Town Manager did explain that the cost overruns, how it was justified, but I like to see personally things go before committee for discussion, because you're going over the original figure. And I like to see procedures filed as close, as close as possible. But in this case, we've had a really round of support for this, and I think it's a really good thing for the town, and we want to be positive, we want to take a positive approach, even though when I criticize something, I go negative and then I go positive. But I really do that for a reason. So I really want to encourage a positive, affirmative vote on this, even though I would prefer it to go to committee. I think that the amount that we're spending is going to really help for the community, especially the young people. We want to give them the vision that Groton is the place to go, and there's good things to do in Groton. So in this case, I am going to vote for this particular resolution.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this issue? Representative Obray?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, my, my.
So hard to be retarded. I just wanted to say that normally, I wouldn't want to go this way either, but because of the fact that there's been so much education to us about this proposal, and the enthusiasm of the people that should be enjoying it, I would say that we should go this way. I don't want things like this to go as a practice. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Representative Powers S.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Manager Burke, any funds that are saved through this project after we approve, if we get this approved tonight, will be returned to the fund?
Yeah, that's what always happens, yes. After five years, funds lapse anyways, and stay back and then into the capital projects fund. But as soon as a project's done, we move those funds back, we sweep them, you know, a couple times a year, go through what's done, let's put them back into the fund balance.
Do we have a figure as to how much is left, John, after we're done taking this?
After using, if no other projects, like if everything has stayed static?
Yeah.
We anticipate probably needing two, up to two-hundred, that we're hoping we won't need that much, but we're keeping two-hundred thousand back for the police locker room project, because that came in quite a bit overbid, and we will retain about another hundred and fifty thousand on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
So typically, we're having more coming back.
Yeah, thank you.
Representative Whitney?
Just have a couple of questions. One of my questions is, a few years ago, we approved bathrooms for Sutton Park. I wonder if that factors in? My other, oh, yeah.
Separate projects? That is ongoing, but that's separate from these, this project.
Excellent.
It just happens to be the same park.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question is, how much of the additional cost is due to added elements through community engagement process versus overruns?
I should probably bring Mark and Chad up. However, you know, as they got into the full, I can't see if you're, I assume you have the full plan right there that's in the packet. It was definitely flushed out and expanded based on public input, but Mark and Chad, you want to go up just to clarify?
Good evening, Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation. This is Chad Frost from Kenton Frost, they're the landscape architects that we've been working with to put together the conceptual plan. Representative Whitney, your question, just so that I'm clear.
I was just wondering what additional elements were added through community engagement since we approved it, and then what portion of the additional costs are due to the fact that expenses went up, or estimated costs went up?
There was a extensive community engagement process. We had onsite meetings with the skate park, with the skaters, a lot of these guys were here. We had meetings at the community center. We had a presentation to the council. So there was, as we were going through that process, the skaters were, they recognized that there's a certain area to kind of work within. The overall goal, though, was to kind of break down the barriers that exist there. Like right now, the skate park is completely fenced in. We wanted to do away with the fence, make it more open, welcoming, and inviting, and that was the overall goal. And so what, the conceptual plan that you see here reflects that goal of trying to make it more open and more inviting.
And then what portion of the additional costs are due to the fact that expenses went up or estimated costs went up?
There was a extensive community engagement process. We had onsite meetings with the skate park, with the skaters, a lot of these guys were here. We had meetings at the community center. We had a presentation to the council. So there was, as we were going through that process, the skaters were, they recognized that there's a certain area to kind of work within. The overall goal, though, was to kind of break down the barriers that exist there. Like right now, the skate park is completely fenced in. We wanted to do away with the fence, make it more open, welcoming, and inviting. And that was the overall goal. And so what, the conceptual plan that you see here reflects that goal of trying to make it more open and more inviting. All the elements that you see were introduced by the skaters. And Kenton Frost just took that and kind of put it in from, you know, all this talk into a conceptual plan. As far as the cost overruns, it's difficult to put a, a value, I think specifically on, you know, I think Chad can share, you know, concrete used to be X amount of dollars per square foot. And, you know, now it's, it's jumped up to Y amount. And I don't know if Chad, you want to?
Good evening, everyone. Chad Frost with Kent Frost Land and Park Architecture. So to reiterate what Mark was saying, that concrete specifically has jumped significantly. So whereas a couple of years ago, we were counting about $5 a square foot for concrete, right now, it's going for 20 to 25. So since this project was first kind of brought up and you guys funded it the first time around, costs have significantly gone up. But however, when we also were then talking with the public, there were a lot of things that the public came out and said, we really want this to be included in the park, that wasn't in those initial ideas when the first budget was put together. Things like a second basketball court, extra walking areas, fitness trails, extra lighting. Some of the stuff that came out of the park and rec master plan update, which was just finished for additional areas of seating, additional shade structures and things like that. So the initial idea of, I'll say roughly a million dollar park. When we were done with the master plan, it was over a $4 million park. And so this is the plan of trying to get down from the full reach of a 4 million and, and hit a middle ground. And we had a long discussion with the town council with all sorts of different options. And at the end, this was what they were choosing to go forward with from all the different components. If that answers your question.
Is there any other discussion? Representative Casper, then Representative Antipas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this park really incorporates far more than just a skate park. It includes the basketball and, and just a park.
Correct.
Not, not in this one here.
Yeah, just, just so that we're clear, the full, the full build-out came in at 4.155 million. So the number that, that hopefully the RTM will approve tonight does not include a second basketball court, does not include a new playground, does not include a seating area. So we have, what engineers like to use is value engineered this project down to a, a level where we meet the initial goal of providing a, making an investment in the skate park. There is separate money for a couple of other items. The question was asked about the bathrooms. That was additional, a separate pot of money that we received, one from the state. And we also received money from the state to install a multi-use path. So those are separate projects that are separately funded. So what we're looking at this evening is primarily building out the skate park, with the exception of one, I think it's Section F? Yeah, Section F. So all the, the money approved tonight would do all the work on the skate park, including lights, which was part of the original plan, and leaving out Section F. And we'll have to figure out how to address what was identified in the community, through the community needs process, community engagement process of creating a seating area, coming up with money for a, a new playground.
And those are most likely to be smaller projects that we, you know, one year you put in a CIP for this piece, et cetera. This is the core of the project.
And for those that don't know, because they're new to this, a CIP is a capital improvement project. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, Representative Antipas?
I saw a line item for public art for $30,000. Is that included in this?
No, that was cut out also.
Okay, that was cut out?
Yes.
I was just curious. We could get some like elementary school kids or something, you know?
Yeah, or just some kids with a can of spray paint or something.
Thank you. Any other further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote on item, excuse me, 2023-97, oops, excuse me, wrong one. 2023-860 for Sutton Park renovation investment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Can you please raise your hands, the noes? We have Mead, Antipas, Bailey, Williams. V.C. Williams, excuse me, V.C. Williams, yes. Okay, online, you can put your hands down, thank you. Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. 20, I believe it's 29 in favor. Four opposed, no abstentions. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you all to the members that came out today to discuss this item. Moving on, we've got one more item to go. Item K2, 2023-973, Groton RTM 2024 regular meeting schedule. Okay, and it's in your packet on page three. It has the list of the meeting schedules. If you know, there are, it's every second Wednesday that we meet here at the RTM. Typically, just like we did today, there will be a slight caucus around 6:30 if both Republican and Democrats want to sit down and meet. And all the meetings start at 7 o'clock. However, comma, only if there's business to attend to, however, comma. However, I'd like to amend, Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, I'd like to move that date or that time to 7:30. And it's basically because I need to, because I have to be somewhere else. I'm chairing a City of Groton caucus, so I need to be there. So that's going to give me enough leeway to get here on time. If I'm not here by 7:30, I'll, you guys, by RTM rules, well, the clerk will start the meeting and someone will vote in the moderator from there. Okay, so if there's any objections to that, you could raise your hands. But I'm hoping y'all can give me that solid. It's going to be the first, January 10th, 2024. I need to amend that to 7:30. That will be the only meeting that will be at 7:30. All the others will stay at our normal meeting time at 7 o'clock. Please and thank you. All right. And again, if, if we don't have any business, then we won't be attending anyways. Yes, Mr. Porella, regarding the
Yeah, you didn't need a motion on that to approve that?
Yes, I motion, yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, 7:30.
Second, I mean, further.
Yeah, sure. Who seconded that? All right, Watson? All right, any discussion on the regular meeting schedule as amended? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the amended meeting schedule for the RTM for 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much. I see your hand up, Representative Massett. What would you like to tell us?
It's not for me.
Okay.
It's for me.
Okay. Representative Obrey?
One second, my associates could be care of this.
Roger that.
I'd just like to ask to, let me see, make, I don't know exactly how I want to say this. Make a motion, because I think there should be a committee formed to discuss the change of the holidays that were done by the council. Now, what however is appropriate, I would be happy to say it again. But I'd like to have a committee formed and a discussion and brought back to the RTM.
Okay, thank you. So there's, again, we don't necessarily have to make a motion for that. We can do it under the referrals line. And we can refer that as a group to a committee. And guess what? We're going to refer that to the Temporary Rules and Procedures Committee, because they're the first one formed. So if you could please, the, the item for discussion, you will be trying to modify and approve the 34th RTM rules, as well as a discussion on whether or not this body would like to use power of initiative to modify the changes made to the Columbus Day holiday, to the Italian-American Heritage, and Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday that was approved at the special meeting with town council previously.
Did you see my lips moving when I said all that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I did. I, I see your hand, Representative Watson, then Representative Massett.
I'm going to get all of that in writing, right?
Correct. Yes, the town clerk and, and their professional staff will do that, yes, indeed. All right, is there any other discussion? Yes, under other business, Representative Porella?
I would like to refer to a committee, something that one of the councils brought up in their, I believe it's committee at the whole. And I'm kind of in agreement with this. It's a little bit controversial subject, but it has to do with rules again, whether RTM members are allowed to speak under citizens petitions. And I think that has to be addressed because, and the time limits.
We, we have a rule on that already, sir.
Right, and I'd like that to be looked at.
Well, and that's going to be something that will be brought up during the Temporary Rules and Procedures Committee. And if you have any insight or additions or revisions or subtractions to that, I'm going to recommend that you refer those to me, the town counselor, the, no, excuse me, the town clerk, town manager, or the chair, Representative Watson.
Okay, thank you very much for that, because there are issues briefly that can come up where you might need to speak as a resident, if it's something personal, whatever. And I think that has to be done.
Understood, thank you. All right, is there any other discussion before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, before I do that, I'd just like to thank everybody for being a, a participant and trying to help the town of Groton. I wish you all a happy holiday, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, happy Three Kings Day, and I'll see you next year. Meeting adjourned.